Hereby call the May 6, 2019 Alexander County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. At this time, we will stand for our invocation by Vice Chairman Ronnie Reese and our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Marty Pennell.
I'd like to have just a moment of silence for a prayer for those that were injured and victims of the UNCC shooting and slain officer in Moore'sville. We'll have them all in silence. Lord will come to you today and thank you for the good things you do for us. Thank you for each person here tonight. Pray, Lord, that you'd give us wise ability to make wise decisions that would move Alexander County forward. Pray for protection of our county citizens and our EMS, EMT, all the emergency services that put ourselves on the land each day to protect us, whatever and guide them. Thank you for a good day. Thank you for the weather you've given to us. We'll give a safe journey back to our homes. All this asking your name. Amen.
If you would, direct your attention to the flag. Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
This time, we'll hear any commissioner reports.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things, if you may. First, I'd like to make mention of there's going to be a ceremony here to honor a lady, Mrs. Tressie Pierce Boyd. This ceremony will be May the 16th, Alexander County Courthouse at 5:00. She was the first female to present a case or represent a client in Alexander County. She, gosh, there's a whole long thing here. She received a law degree at University of South Carolina. She started in Columbia, South Carolina, in 1930. Then she was able to practice law in North Carolina. She was born in Alexander County and died a resident of Alexander County on February the 13th, 1973. And also, there's going to be some recognition in Raleigh for her. Jeffrey Elmore is putting something together for that. And just keep that on your calendar. And also, Saturday, May the 11th, will be our second annual Alexander County Draft Horse Pull. These are Belgian draft horses. The first one was at the fire grounds. This one will be at the H. and H. Arena on Ned Herman Road. And there'll also be some miniature ponies who will be doing some pulling, too. So it'll be an interesting time. Be lots of food and lots of things there to do. I'd ask each one to come out. Probably the gates will open at 10:00. The ceremony, the showtime, will start at 12:00 noon. And it'll probably go through about, probably 6:00 o'clock by the time, 6:00 to 7:00 by the time everyone, the horses pull and all of that. So put that on your calendar also. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Others?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to send out a thank you to the owners of Ace Hardware up in Bethlehem. They had their ribbon cutting, grand opening Saturday, I mean Friday of last week. Great turnout. The public really supported the opening. It just goes to show that citizens here are investing financially and with their families in the community by taking on such an investment. But there was a lot of great deals to be had up there Friday. And I'd like for everybody to support our local businesses, whether it's Ace Hardware or any other business. So I just want to send out that thank you to that family.
Thank you, sir. Any others? What I'd like to say that we, we had a tour of CEF, which is custom education furniture. Very unique business. Scott McHugh and his crew have done an outstanding job. They've cornered a market on some real high-end educational furniture that's very unique and highly demanded all across the United States. So they're doing some really great things. And they, along with a lot of other places in Alexander County, are manufacturing excellent products that are used all over the world. So we want to do our best to continue to nurture those business relationships and have more of those folks for them to be able to make their products and to employ our people to add to the circular flow of money here in the county. Saturday morning, had the opportunity to go to the fourth annual Apple Blossom Festival and neat little festival and was able to get a lot of it in before the rain hit. But hats off to all those who had a part in making that happen because the Apple Blossom Festival and the Apple Festival and the other things that go on here, the parade and a lot of events that sometimes we may not think draw a lot of attention, but they do bring a lot of people into our county and they get to showcase our county for us. So very pleased with that. We've also been working towards preparing our next year's budget. And obviously, county budget is just like a personal budget or any business budget. It's all dependent upon revenues and expenses. Like most folks, we have limited money. We don't have a printing press that prints money for us. So we're on a fixed income as well and we have a lot of fixed costs that are involved there. Leaves not a whole lot of option for discretionary spending, if you will, or on things that, some things that we really want and would really like to have. So it leaves us with several options when we have more demand than we have resources. We can reduce requests, which are, we feel like are pretty reasonable from all departments. We could increase revenue, which we're certainly trying to do. We can cut current costs, which we look at all of those things as we go along. And certainly, one that no one wants is to increase taxes. So we're doing our very best to be financially responsible with the taxpayer money and to present a good budget here, shortcoming in the near future, to take us through next year. So that's all that I have for a commissioner's report. If no one else does, we'll move on to the adoption of our agenda and entertain a motion to adopt our agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the agenda? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. First thing on our agenda is public comment. And I'd like to say that we do have public comment, but I'd like to read the rules while Ms. Davidson steps forward. The public comment period is intended to allow the Board of Commissioners an opportunity to listen to citizen comments and concerns. It's not a time for the Board to discuss issues or answer impromptu questions. A time period of 15 minutes has been established for public comment at the beginning of the first regular meeting in each month. Link of comment for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please select one spokesperson to represent a group of citizens with the same concerns or questions. Comments are to be directed to the Board as a whole, not to individual members. Citizens will be expected to be civil and courteous in their language and limit comments to issues of public concerns. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the appropriate county officials or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Any citizens wishing to address the Board during public comment shall call the clerk to the Board prior to the meeting to have their name placed on the list. So Ms. Davidson, we are very thankful for you to come share your input and you now have the full podium and all of our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Lana Harrington Davidson from Taylorsville. I was born and raised in Alexander County but have lived in several other places. I would like to suggest to the people of Alexander County that they are privileged to live in this beautiful county. I have recently fallen in love with the gentle, loving arms of the Brushes. They surround us on the west, north, and east sides and link us to the neighboring counties of Caldwell, Wilkes, and Iredell. The heavy rains of the past year have caused the trees and trebery to come forth this year in the most luscious greenery I think I have ever seen. I suggest you take sightseeing trips along all the roads in the Brushes, put away your children's electronic toys, and give them pen and paper to record how many letters of the alphabet form the roads that they drive over as they travel. The letters could be S, C, U, V, Y, T, or X. One curve on Pleasant Hill Church Road, no matter how many times you've driven over it, will make you think you are going to make an O. The curve always seems like it will never end. An out-of-state youth volunteer group several years ago commented that they love our curvy roads. Daniel Boone passed through the Brushes and stayed in the Wilkes County area for a few years before moving on to Kentucky. I believe if he had spent those years in the Alexander County side of the Brushes, he would not have left. When you visit the oldest churches in the Brushes, some from the 1700s and 1800s, you will wonder how the people traveled up and down hills to get there each week. That may be why we were once known to have more churches per square mile than any other county in the nation. The churchgoers would not have wanted long journeys each week. Dover Baptist Church in West Alexander County is an example of this. The area is one of high hills and narrow valleys. And even today, the paved road ends at that church on top of the hill. It was formed in 1833. Three forks and little river churches are older but are located in the more gently rolling hills in northern Alexander. Mount Hebron is where you will find the often referred to Sugarloaf Mountain. If you stand in the rear parking lot of Mount Hebron, you will be standing at the foot of Sugarloaf Mountain. I had to identify it for an ancestry researcher whose ancestors said they lived under the cliffs of Sugarloaf Mountain. The northern Brushes has many apple orchards and the Wilkes County side is exploding in new apple orchards. They can be seen if you follow Moore Mountain Road. Brushy Mountain Motorsports Park in the west arm of the Brushes has figured out how to use those hills to advantage. They offer miles and miles of trails for dirt bikes and other off-the-road vehicles. For special events, they have lots and lots of weekend campers in everything from tents to pop-up campers and recreational vehicles of all sizes. They have bathroom and shower facilities. Someone has suggested the possibilities of building rental cabins in the area. I have camped out on Wilson Creek in Caldwell County in an RV, and I believe this idea could be a great vacation spot for many. The hills can be conquered and treasured. The more gently rolling hills can be found in the eastern arm of the Brushes, which joins Iredell County. Perhaps Love Valley is a name that will remind you that you are still in the Brushes and they have horse-riding trails to enjoy. The southern area of Alexander County is without mountains but has rolling hills and has the great Catawba River as its boundary. I encourage all residents to discover the Brushy Mountains of Alexander County, one trip at a time, as soon as you can and as often as you can, as often as you like. And in closing, I'd like to read a poem that I wrote 17 years ago in 2002 about Alexander County. It's titled just simply "Alexander County." Certainly small and not quite square, some find me quaint, but that's not fair. So much to give, so much I provide, my beauty and grace I just cannot hide. What would you like? Rivers and streams or mountains and lakes with valleys between? How about the weather? I have sun and snow. And gemstones aplenty, oh wow, what a show. Pasture lands rolling, bubbling springs here and there. Wooded hills for the strolling and forgetting your cares. Solid with granite, the heights do proclaim. Immovable forces, staying the same. These are my beginnings, people are my fate. I'm Alexander County in the old North State.
This is very fitting. Thank you very much. We do have a beautiful county. Sometimes we fail to acknowledge on a daily basis just how pretty a place that we live. Moving on to item number two is public hearing for rezoning case 1913. John Pilkington will be conducting an open hearing. Before we go into the open hearing, though, I want to read a statute about the conduct of public hearings. The Board of Commissioners may hold public hearings at any place within the county. The Board may adopt reasonable rules governing the conduct of public hearings, including to, but, including but not limited to, rules fixing the maximum time allotted to each speaker, providing for designation of spokesperson for groups of persons supporting or opposing the same position, providing for the selection of delegates from groups of persons supporting or opposing the same positions when the number of persons wishing to attend the hearing exceeds the capacity of the hall, and lastly, providing for the maintenance of order and decorum in the conduct of the hearing. The Board may continue public hearing without further advertisement. If a public hearing is set for a given date and a quorum of the Board is not then present, the Board shall continue the hearing without further advertisement until its next regular meeting. And we have two public hearings tonight, and I would like to say that during either one, please be advised that speakers for either hearing will be limited to five minutes pursuant to the general statute that I just read. In addition, the Board asks that speakers refrain from any personal attacks, naming employees, or discussing specific personnel issues. At this time, we entertain a motion to go into public hearing for rezoning case 1913.
Make a motion to enter into public hearing for rezoning case 1913.
I'm sorry, 1913. You are correct. Motion was heard. We have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand to vote. Motion passes unanimously. We are now considered in hearing. Mr. Pilkington, take us away.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the Board. Tonight, we have a public hearing for rezoning case 19-3. The applicant is Landon Ferguson. The property owner is SPL Holdings LLC. The applicant is requesting rezoning this parcel of land from light industrial to highway commercial. The address is 5646 NC Highway 16 South, Taylorsville. The applicant intends to, at this time, have retail gun sales on the property in the future. He may apply for a conditional use permit to possibly open an indoor shooting range on the property. But this rezoning would not allow him to do that. He would have to have another public hearing to possibly get a conditional use permit to open the indoor shooting range. This is approximately nine acres of land, and as noted, Mr. Ferguson wants to be able to do retail gun sales on the property at this time. Noted in the 2008 comprehensive plan, it identifies this area along Highway 16 as future commercial property. So this rezoning would be consistent with the adopted future land use map and the policies in the plan, as well as long-term growth patterns on Highway 16 would suggest that it would develop commercially. Staff's recommendation was approval of this rezoning request based on the fact that it is consistent with the 2008 comprehensive plan and consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan and that it would not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to commercial development. The planning and zoning commission met on April 4th, 2019. They were unanimous in their recommendation of approval for this rezoning request, noting again that it is consistent with the future land use map in the 2008 comprehensive plan and also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan and that the request would not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to commercial development. If you have any questions, I'll be certainly happy to try to answer them. I saw that Mr. Ferguson is here as well.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any one with any comments? Mr. Ferguson, would you like to speak or good?
I'm good unless you have any questions.
No comments? Any questions?
As this property, there's a vacant warehouse on it at this time.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, making good use of an empty building.
Absolutely. With no further comments or questions, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. And entertain now a motion to approve rezoning 1913.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like a recommendation that we approve this rezoning case 19-3 based upon the fact that the rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map of the 2008 comprehensive plan and is also consistent with the goals and policies adopted in the plan. The request will not negatively impact the surrounding with regards to commercial development since that's what our comprehensive plan stated for Highway 16.
Thank you, sir. We've heard the motion and we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Let me add one thing. I appreciate moving into the new Alexander County Services Center. I will miss my proximity to Crossroads Grill, but I think I'll, and I can speak on behalf of everybody in my department. We enjoy the new building and being in downtown and closer to everything, but I will miss the burgers and just being able to get to Crossroads a lot easier.
Just a few more minutes and you can be right there.
That's true. That's true. Thanks for that.
We're real excited about our move into our building. Up next, number three, public hearing, consolidated human services. I've read the general statutes and I would like to share a bit of information, consolidation talking points. We have talked about this for a couple of months and announced what we were doing in terms of this hearing, but the consolidation talking points are as follows. This provides many positive opportunities for our county, not only for staff but for the citizens that we serve. We believe it will improve service delivery. Many clients cross over between DSS, the Health Department, and the Senior Center, which are the three entities that will be consolidated. It'll give us a unified personnel system for all county staff. There'll be improved communications between programs, improved communications between departments and the Board of Commissioners, and we'll better informed on the needs of our citizens and the staffs, the staff that serves them. This plan will further provide us an opportunity to identify more efficient systems and processes. And we will also see health and human services staff working better together to reduce redundancies, improve knowledge of resources, and inter-agency collaborations. We believe that we will be afforded greater grant opportunities and definitely want to reiterate the fact that this is not to eliminate staff but to assist them in providing services more efficiently. We hope to improve the client experience and reduce all redundancies when possible. So we now will entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for Consolidated Human Services Agency. I'm sorry, I said that before we went into the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go into public hearing.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. We are now in the public hearing for the Consolidated Human Services Agency. Do we have any comments? And remember that comments will be limited to five minutes per person.
Evening. My name is Tenille Herman. I was asked to speak tonight concerning my time with the Alexander County Department of Social Services and the possible need for an overhaul of this county department. My goal is to be gracious and professional, not conflictual. I want to thank many of my friends who have come to support me and can testify to what I say as they too were employees of Alexander County Department of Social Services. Thank you for showing up, but you guys always do when there's a need and that is why you guys are great social workers. When I graduated from Linnor Ryan in 2013, I was hired as a social worker technician for the Alexander County Department of Social Services. Later in 2013, I took a position as a foster care social worker and remained in that position for nearly five years. I left DSS in February of this year. I was not angry but frustrated that I could not advance in my position, though I was qualified to do so. I was leaving because of a lack of county oversight in this department, the petty power struggles within the department, and the power plays and vindictiveness of those in positions higher than I. I would have much rather stayed and spent my efforts and time and heart in a county than to drive 30 minutes to a strange county a thousand times over. I believe there are others in this room that can attest to the same feelings of frustration and sadness that caused me to make my difficult decision to leave the county's Department of Social Services. I love Alexander County. I love everything about it, but especially the children that I served, and I loved being home. Over 53 employees have left Alexander County DSS in the five years of my employment in child welfare alone. That averages over 10 employees per year, nearly one per month. That is an enormous employee turnover rate for a large county, much less one of our size. Often, we hear the excuse they're leaving because of more money elsewhere. That is possible, of course, but truly, most people who live in and are loyal to their county don't leave because of money. We've all heard the quote, "People don't leave bad jobs, they leave bad bosses," and it's almost become a cliche. But cliche or not, it does carry much truth. Glassdoor is an organization that offers not only employment opportunities but reviews. Surprisingly, it offers reviews on Alexander County DSS, too, and I would like to share a line from just a couple. 2018, "High turnover rate and burnout. Good luck, you'll need it." Advice to management, "The entire organization needs to be audited all the way to management." 2019, not me, by the way. "Overworked, underpaid, and understaffed. Turnover rate is so high Colorado is jealous. Advice to management, clean house." 2018, "This is the worst work environment I have ever worked in in my life. This place is extremely egotistical management in a Hillary Clinton-type charade. Newcomers that are not liked by a certain power team get thrown under the bus on a daily basis. Advice to management, clean house." 2018, "The work environment is one of the worst that I've ever worked in, ever. Supervisors are cold and extremely rude. Advice to management. The state needs to go in and clean house. Families are not getting the services that they need or deserve. Policies and procedures are not being followed through with. It's a disaster." One more and then you can go online and read for yourself. "It's all about who you know, who your parents are, what church you go to, and how much butt you can kiss. You will not get anywhere unless you have these qualifications. If you ever challenge management, be prepared for retaliation. Advice to management. It would be great and it would be nice for people to be promoted based on their experience, capabilities, and merit, not who they rub shoulders with. Supervisors do not have the employees' best interest at heart. The morale is bad, so bad. Not one positive review of our DSS, not one. And I don't think anyone in this room believes that is okay." I'd like to say the reviews written are not typical of DSS, but I cannot truthfully say that because if I were writing a review, it would read familiar. One of the areas of great concern to me is the backlog of paperwork and missed timeframes. The backlog and missed timeframe doesn't necessarily exist because of inadequate workers but because of the lack of training by leadership and expectations of new workers having the knowledge that previous veteran social workers have. Overworked, overburdened workers can't keep track of their own cases, and that can lead to abused, neglected, or even dead children. It leads to state intervention and embarrassment of the front-page newspaper. What I have experienced and what I continue to hear about is workers constantly slammed with the work outside of their training and hired positions. The more that makes me believe the agency won't improve until it gets a major overhaul. We need a leader who will restore credibility with employees, create an environment that improves employee morale, positions workers to succeed, and more important than anything, insists on policy and procedures that protect this county's children. It is ludicrous to think that anyone would be hired in a position of supervision who carried a backlog of paperwork for children who had not been sufficiently served. Our agency is in terrible despair, turmoil, and chaos. I was not an unhappy employee. I was unhappy about the agency, and when you work somewhere for six years, you have much invested in it and you are tremendously concerned about what happens, not just to the agency but to the people who are served. But to be fair, good things have happened for many children through DSS, and we should celebrate that.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Any other comments? And as we near the five-minute mark, I'll give you like a 10-second.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and I'm here because I have, regarding the consolidation. And it's like, that was just a slap in the face because I have never had anybody call or bring up those kinds of conflicts, not at any meeting.
Please state your name for the audience.
My name is Barbara Hayes, and I'm on the Social Services Board of Directors. And I'm here because with consolid, like in the meetings I've attended, consolidation could go either way. It can be a good thing or there's some negatives. In my time on the Board, nobody ever called or complained, and nobody at the meetings ever brought your issues up. And I'm sorry you all experienced that. So I have concerns. And I heard evidence of the things that you could do, and maybe you've said them in the other meetings that I've not been, but tonight was the first time I heard the evidence is the things that will be done when you consolidate. And I see those good things happening, but I need to know exactly what they are. And if we have those meetings, somebody's got to bring forth the And if we have those meetings, somebody's got to bring forth these evidences that this lady's talked about. Anyway, in my time on the Social Services Board, I've had three calls regarding any issues. That's it, that's, so we're just looking at two different things. And there were three things I wanted you to, I wanted to address. This Social Services Board has come, has been under budget every time they do work. Some of the people are really working hard and seem to be getting a lot, like, I just don't understand why we, why we're not hearing this, why we haven't heard this before. And based on the agenda, the time that you're going to vote on this tonight seemed really pretty fast, but evidently you've been dealing with this for a long, for a long period of time. And I would just like to challenge the Commissioners to be really transparent and put maybe something in the times or like on the radio so that, so that the people that want to know can be informed. And then I challenge the people that are listening, that ever read, to become involved in their government, because these things that she just spoke about, we need to be knowing about that. Everybody needs to be knowing about that. That's all. I just know a different side of the Social Services people that are working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Any other comments? With no further comments, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion that we close the public hearing? I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is a resolution approving creation of a Consolidated Human Services Agency, assuming control of activities of a Consolidated Human Services Board. I've had the opportunity to read the resolution. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the resolution to consolidate human services agencies.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just, I just want to reiterate what Barbara was saying about. We've talked about this for a long time, and we've actually been talking about it quite a bit since probably January, and, you know, of course, we've heard a lot of problems, but that's not the reason for this. This is, you know, what we talked about, better services, better communication. That's one of the reasons, one of the big reasons that we have the new Alexander County Services Center, is to get all these people together, have better communication, better services for the public. That's what this is about. It's a better, more efficient way to spend taxpayer dollars, and that's all it is, so.
And Mr. Mayberry, I might add also that all employees retain their job just the same, no one loses a job. All three boards will have the capacity to be as advisory boards to the Commissioners. So, there will be a lot of things that remain very similar in looking within that organization.
And just one more thing, Mr. Chairman, and we don't want to add more work on ourselves, so, you know, but we think that this is such a good thing for the citizens of Alexander County and the people that DSS serves. So, we think it's a good thing, and we don't want more work, but, you know, that's fine, we got to do that. So, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I've studied long and hard about this thing, and some of the meetings that I've been to and listened to the discussions, I think most people that follow Social Services understands that ultimately, if something happens or something goes down, Alexander County itself is responsible for any kind of fine that be levied against the Social Services for not able to get certain reports in because of the mandates that have come down from the state of North Carolina. A lot of folks also do not understand the paperwork that has come from the state of North Carolina implementation. The Child Protection Act is now being worked on, and it's been on trial in several counties at this time, and they're doing that at this time. It's going, they're looking to cut from, I'm just going to use this as an example only, okay? It's not legit, but example. Say if you have fifteen cases, they're wanting to cut the workload to each case person to say nine or ten or less, if they can. So, there are things that are happening in Social Services. But ultimately, if something is fined against the county or against Social Services, Alexander County is responsible for that fine. And folks, if I'm going to be responsible for the fine, and the taxpayers of Alexander County are going to hold me accountable, then I'm going to stand, and I'm going to be the person that serves, since I'm elected now, to make sure that everything is adhered to, and we try to do the very, very best job that we can do. I've served on the Social Services Board twice. I heard the young lady talking tonight, and I was on the Social Services Board one time for two years, I believe it was. I've been on this time, I've been there this time two years. I've had one phone call in two years. In the four years that I was on, I've only really had one phone call. Most folks don't understand that the state of North Carolina mandated a lot of things down on Social Services. They didn't give the proper training to Social Services. That was addressed in Raleigh to our representatives at that time, and our Social Services did everything they could do. They had people coming over from Catawba County to assist them, and to do the things that they could do to try to make it better for people, for the workers. It's a tough job. But my primary thing is, and basically on this, is the fact that if we're held accountable, we five Commissioners sitting here, we are the ones that will be held accountable and we have to say that we have to pay the fine. And if we're going to be held accountable, then we need to be in charge of these areas. And that's basically where I'm coming from. It's not anything that any board's done or anyone else has done. It's what they've mandated from the state of North Carolina.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the board and a second. We've had discussion at this time. Entertain a vote. All in favor of the motion as stated to approve the resolution of creating a Consolidated Human Services Agency and assuming control of the activities of Consolidated Human Services Board, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have Mr. Doug Gillespie, our EMS Director, to share with us a proclamation concerning National EMS Week.
First of all, I want to say thank you for giving me this time to speak. Thank you to the Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. French, and of course, Ms. Orange herself. Some might not be aware, but the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth is National EMS Appreciation Week, and I'm here as EMS for proclamation for Alexander County EMS, and I'll go along as it's read. Whereas, emergency medical service is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the EMS service team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Whereas, the emergency medical service consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrative 911 telecommunicators, and others. Whereas, the members of the emergency medical service team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Whereas, is it appropriate to recognize the values and the accomplishments of emergency medical service providers by designating EMS Service Week? And at the bottom, it says, now therefore, I, Dr. Jeff Peel, Chairman, Alexander County Board of Commissioners, Tylersville, North Carolina, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, 2019, is Emergency Service Week, with the theme being caring in the community, or caring for the community. And it's got a place for the signature and adopted the sixth day of May, 2019. And you'll just see a couple of little pictures that we had, so you wouldn't just have to listen to me talk, you could actually watch a little bit of things going on.
Right, you have heard, oh, I'm sorry.
You're good.
I thought it was done.
It went through, it's on the second round.
Okay, you have heard the proclamation by Mr. Gillespie. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve this National EMS Week proclamation.
A second.
Second.
Any discussion? I had a comment, I don't know if it's discussion or not, but down by our school today, this afternoon, there was a pretty bad accident, and not that I'd like for this to happen, but as I was leaving, I passed emergency services vehicles coming across Millersville Road. They were coming from Wittenburg as I was pulling out, and they were coming from town. So, we had emergency services, fire trucks, ambulances, converging from three areas onto that accident, and that's service. You know, I hate that there was an accident, but it was sure comforting to know that there was a lot of response, and I appreciate that.
There was a lot of response there. I came through just right after it happened also. A lot of response, and they maintained the area real well, took care of traffic, and secured the area real well. Did a real good job based on the way it happened, where everything was coming down at the curve right there. But I'd also wanted to say that, you know, I know that not having a hospital in this county would depend on our emergency medical services tremendous amount, and I don't know about the rest of these guys here, except maybe Mr. French down there on the end. I know that he and I, I mean, he didn't experience here, he experienced it in Boone, but I've experienced it here, and twice, bless you all. Our emergency medical services are as good as any in the state of North Carolina, and I'll put them up against anybody. When they get there, they're calm, cool, collect, they take a deep breath, and they go to work, and they take care of you and get you stabilized. And I appreciate what you do. I really appreciate the quick response that they have, and the way they handle the situation and get you where you need to be when you need to be there. Our EMS personnel and our first responders are well-qualified, well-trained individuals that take care of the situation and maintain the safety and the care of the people of Alexander County. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just like I say, too, I really appreciate what you guys do, and it amazes me each month we get a report of the calls, you know, the 911 and non-911. So, you know, when you make that telephone call and somebody answers on the other end, that's really a blessing. And then to see, you know, the qualified, certified people come out to answer that call, I appreciate what you guys are doing, and all of your employees. Do appreciate.
Thank you.
All right, we have heard the proclamation, have a motion to approve, and a second. We've had discussion, and now entertain a vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have County Manager Rick French, who's going to share with us the Alexander County Road Naming Ordinance Amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is the Alexander County Road Naming Ordinance. There are a number of changes recommended. There are a number of deletions. There are, those are on pages four, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. There's also some changes in red, and overall, the idea is for this ordinance to be more customer-friendly, to make it more streamlined. Now, all these departments are together in the new Alexander County Services building, so this will make the process with building inspections and addressing much more user-friendly for our citizens. And you have those changes in your ordinance and in your packet.
Thank you, sir. Well, we've all had opportunity to look at the ordinance. Mr. French has shared the reasoning behind the proposal. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Road Naming Ordinance Amendments.
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the changes to the Alexander County Road Naming Ordinance.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, please raise your right hand, and if all in favor, motion passes unanimously. Next, Mr. French will present DHHS, Alexander County Memorandum of Understanding for Fiscal Year 2019, 2020.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. In your packet is a copy of the Memorandum of Understanding with DHHS in Alexander County. This is just for your information tonight, just want to make sure that you're aware of it. We have been asked to approve this and return this to DHHS by June twenty-eighth, 2019. Last year, there were a number of counties that actually attached letters to this. This was, this will be the second year we've had this, and so we'll provide a better breakdown at a meeting in the next, in the next month, but just want to make sure this is on your radar as we move forward in the next few meetings.
Thank you, sir. With no action required, we'll move on to Budget Ordinance Amendments, numbers forty-two through forty-eight. Mr. County Manager Rick French.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Budget Amendment Number Forty-two is to increase the governing body budget for estimate of workers' compensation claim deductibles for the remainder of the 2018-2019 budget year, and to increase the governing body budget for the receipt of funds from a local business for the remaining $2,500 balance owed for the independent celebration fireworks display. Budget Amendment Number Forty-three is to increase the detention budget for estimated medical supplies and inmate medical bills for the remainder of the 2018-2019 budget year due to the serious medical conditions that require treatment beyond that provided by in-house medical visits. Additional funds may be needed later in the year. Budget Amendment Number Forty-four is to increase the library budget for state grant funding in excess of original estimates. Budget Amendment Number Forty-five is to increase the budgeted revenue for Senior Center Operations Grant due to reallocation of funds from the Home and Community Care Block Grant. The expense and required local match were already included in the Senior Center Expense Budget. General fund contingency is being increased to keep the county budget in balance. Budget Amendment Number Forty-six is to adjust the Bethlehem Water Fund budget based on the data from year-to-date revenue from the City of Hickory. The same with Budget Amendment Number Forty-seven, it's to adjust the County Water and Sewer Fund budget based on the, based on data from year-to-date revenue from the City of Hickory. And Budget Amendment Number Forty-eight is to budget for payouts of vacation, holiday, comp time for employees leaving during the 2018-2019 fiscal year. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions you have on the budget amendments, Mr. Chairman, or members of the board.
Items are pretty succinct. We have a motion to approve said budget ordinances, forty-two through forty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Budget Ordinance Amendments, number forty-two through forty-eight, as stated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding the Budget Ordinance Amendments, forty-two through forty-eight?
I'd just say on number forty-three, I believe it was last I'd just say, um, number forty-three, I believe it was last month we had an increase for what, medical examiner cost, is that, seems like we're getting a, I guess, the ones that are being detained are in worse shape, or we're just, things are costing more, I guess, at the, you know, with the sheriff's department, so, you know, that's something everybody needs to be aware of, so.
Stop arresting people with medical issues.
And, 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 you know, I think it's only fair to make sure that our citizens of Alexander County understand that if an inmate is arrested, and he's brought into the Alexander County facility, uh, most are medical, if they don't have somebody cover it with, uh, health insurance, uh, we, the citizens of the great county of Alexander and the state of North Carolina at this time, we foot a lot of that bill, and, uh, you all would be surprised. In the past, I know we've, uh, uh, we've paid for bypass surgery, uh, over at Frye, I think, a couple years ago, uh, so, you know, if, if you're in, you're, you're in, you're an inmate, you're in the custody of Alexander County, then that means that, uh, we, the citizens of Alexander County, get the opportunity to provide medical care for those people. That's why when you hear about people that have, are, are going to be placed under arrest, a lot of times, uh, if they're, uh, been hurt or injured, the officers might stand guard outside the door, but they don't do anything till the doctor releases them, therefore, they take them into custody after they've been released and receive medical care. So, our, our citizens foot that bill, and it's, uh, one of those things that we've been working on and talked to our legislatures about, and trying to do some things to alleviate that problem, and it's one of the things that, uh, the North Carolina Association and County Commissioners have been trying to do to get Medicaid so that it'll help take, offset the cost of what it is for the counties.
I do appreciate what all of our law enforcement do, but, you know, the things you used to hear about in Charlotte, they're happening right here in Alexander County. So, you know, we just need to always be aware of what's going on, and thank our police and our sheriff and our highway patrol every time you see one, for the job that they do. Uh, they have no idea, really, who they're coming up against, and, uh, I do appreciate what they do, but it does cost money, so.
And we'd much rather be able to spend that money somewhere else, but we can't.
That's true.
So, that's one of those mandates, and we have to do what we have to do.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion? At this time, I'll, uh, ask for a vote, all in favor of the motion to approve the Budget Ordenses forty-two through forty-eight, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we will move to our County Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just a couple things to report tonight. The county sales tax revenue for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, uh, we have collected three million, one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars, which, uh, represents, uh, sixty-seven percent of the budget collected. Uh, the total budget for the regular, uh, sales tax is four million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. That is five, five point two-nine percent higher than the same time last year. The new sales tax, as we call it, um, we've collected one million, fifteen thousand and seventy-nine dollars so far this year, um, that represents sixty-six point seven oh percent of the, uh, budget, uh, year collected. The amount of money that we budgeted for new sales tax was one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and that represents five point one six percent increase from this time last year. Also, at our last meeting, we spoke about the possibility of financing the Alexander County Services Center building renovations. Uh, we were given the authority that staff was to, um, decide whether to move forward or not. We decided not to move forward with the proposal of the, um, two-million-dollar installment financing. After looking at everything, uh, we decided it was, we could handle things like they are, and we did not wanna pay the two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand to four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand dollars in interest cost over the life of the loan. One other thing I'd like to point out, because there's been a lot of things said about the Alexander County Services Center, the building was purchased in August of two thousand sixteen for three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which was less than the tax value, which was four-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, and a heck of a lot less than what the original asking price from, what the, uh, for the building was, which was well over a million. Renovations, uh, to the building began in the spring of two thousand eighteen, and the project cost, uh, totaled approximately two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand Also, uh, our last meeting, uh, we were given the authority to advertise surplus real property, uh, property located at sixteen West Main Avenue, or known as the Chamber Building. We have received one bid, and it came in at twenty-five thousand, five hundred dollars. It was accompanied by a cashier's check, uh, and it was deemed a responsive and responsible Per the general statutes, the board must either award the property to the highest bidder or reject the bids. Uh, staff is recommending that we reject that bid, and we'll, uh, pursue another means of disposal. Uh, for general information purposes, the current assessed tax valuation of the property is seventy-three thousand, five hundred and one dollars, and we would need to take action on that item, Mr. Chairman, and I do have a couple other items to mention.
Okay, do we need to take action on that before we take action on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I will entertain a motion that we reject that offer as recommended by staff.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reject the offer.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
And just a couple other things to mention, uh, we reported to you earlier that the Register of Deeds, uh, was moving into the Alexander County Services Building on May thirtieth, uh, that date has been moved up to May the twenty-ninth. Um, there's a lot of, a lot of other activities reported, uh, in the County Manager Report, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, and we have some items for closed session tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, everyone's had the opportunity to see your consent agenda, and at this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve consent agenda, as stated.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Would like to add one thing in there, Mr. French, you, you, you talk with big numbers when you talk about taxes and a million and hundred thousands and all that, but generally speaking, our, our revenues are pretty flat.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, and, and, you know, just like for people to, to know that, that while there are big numbers spoken of, the, the revenue for the county is, is pretty flat, plus just a wee little. So, with that said, uh, have a vote on approval of the consent agenda. If all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, could I add one thing?
Absolutely.
Uh, earlier tonight, uh, in the Commissioner's Report, I should've said something, and I didn't, uh, but I would like to wish our clerk to the board a very happy birthday.
We can sing later.
Yeah, everybody, dogs would be barking in town.
At this time, according to North Carolina General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight point one-one, contractual and personnel, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session.
Make a motion to go to closed session, based on the general statute.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. We will adjourn only to dismiss.